Yeah.
We'll call it a regular meeting in the New Ulm City Council for Tuesday, April 2nd, 2019, at 4:30 PM to order. First item on the agenda is your consent agenda items. What's your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items. Any discussion on any? See you none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. There we go. Item number two. Conduct a public hearing on the proposed 2019 North Highland Avenue Improvement Project. Mr. Kaler.
Thank you, Mr. President. The city council has scheduled a public hearing on the proposed 2019 North Highland Avenue Improvement Project, which consists of a mini roundabout being constructed at Oak Street at North, on North Highland Avenue. We did have an open house for this on March 6th. There is a sign up sheet from that open house attached and a few other items. We had about 20 people, approximately 20 people, sign the sign up sheet. I think there was actually more than that. I think generally everyone was in favor of the roundabout, or at least something happening at that intersection. It does pose a problem with peak loading during school days in the AM and PM. If anybody's been up there, they're probably aware of that situation. We only received one written comment from that open house, and that had to do with signage for pedestrians at that location, so we'll try and follow up on that. Otherwise, I have not received any written comments with regard to this public hearing, so you could open that up for discussion.
Thank you. Since it's a public hearing, we're open. Anybody in the audience like to be heard? This is on the roundabout up on Highland Avenue? Nobody? Anybody on the city council want to be heard?
Mr. President, that's up in my ward, so I did attend the public hearing, or the open house, on March 6th. And I did talk to a lot of the folks that were there. Some of the primary concern up there is there had been four accidents at that intersection, which raises, oh, is my right on that, four accidents?
I believe that's correct.
Which has caused concern for that actual intersection. And roundabouts do have, according to the information we received that night, have a less likelihood of any accidents. And any accidents that do occur up there are obviously less severe than what's in there, what's in place now. We do have people that, there were some pedestrians that were at the present at the meeting. They talked about how they're concerned about having safety crossing that intersection at the busy times of the day or evening when they're out for a walk are of concern to them, the way it's certainly set up there. The school obviously supports this roundabout. The two folks that I spoke that were against this, primary concern was that it might get them out of the school parking lot area, but then it just disperses them to other stop signs and other areas, and then they bulk up there and can't get out. And so was the primary concern that the two individuals that I spoke with. But to me, it goes back to the safety, and it goes back to the accidents happening at that intersection. So for that, I do support it, and I will be voting in favor of this.
Anybody else? Public hearing?
I guess I just want to make comment too. I did receive an email on that too, and the concern about if we open up that area there, it's just going to move that down the road to Fifth and Highland, you know, at the four way stop. And I don't know if our city engineer can speak on that, or what our thoughts are on that, or if there's, do you see that as an issue? Or do you think that it will be as bottlenecked down the road? Or do you think that will alleviate?
Mr. President, it will not alleviate any stacking at Fifth North and Highland. The traffic study that was prior, that was conducted prior to this intersection looked at the intersection of North Highland Avenue and Center, and at Oak Street and North Highland Avenue, and determined that the thrust, or the first reconstruction should be at Oak Street because of the unusual delay that happens. The level of service at that intersection is predominantly not, not imperfect, but for a left-hand turn and Oak Street, it's pretty bad. So the stacking at Highland and North Highland Avenue will continue. I don't see it getting any worse, frankly, and we can move on to that intersection at a different time. As part of this process, we had to do what's called an intersection control evaluation, which is, an ICE is what it's called. And it was reviewed by both the Federal Highway Administration and the State Aid Office, and they agreed that the best treatment for this intersection was a roundabout, considering the existing conditions that we have. So I'm fairly confident it's the right decision. It's, we can use our state aid dollars. There's no local tax money or assessments going toward this. Something that the Safety Commission has recommended, and as Counselor Schultz mentioned, the school supports it as well.
Steve, question. Since we're going to be doing Fifth North this year, wouldn't it make sense to include a roundabout at Fifth North right away?
Well, Mr. President, it would seem it would make sense, but we had that federal dollars in the hopper four years ago, prior to this study being done. So for us to add a roundabout to that segment would have changed the project substantially, and we would have had to go back and reapply. And we would have basically lost almost a million dollars of federal money. So, yeah, in hindsight, it would have been nice if we would have included it. But again, that was four or five years ago. We applied for that.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I think I received the same communication as Counselor Fisher did, and with the explanation that was just received, I'm much happier.
I received an aura of one letter also. I don't know if we all received that same letter or not, but, you know, with the concerns about stacking up with the traffic at the Center Street and Fifth North. But we have to, we have to start somewhere. We have to try something at this point in time. So I will support it and-
And to me, it all goes back to the safety.
For safety.
Yep, absolutely.
Anybody else like to be heard in public? See you none? Entertaining motion, closing the public hearing, and ordering it in?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Offer resolution waived reading, closing the public hearing, and ordering into construction. Any more comments?
Is that a motion or a resolution?
Resolution.
Oh, it's a resolution.
Yep.
Yeah, sorry. Offer resolution waived reading, closing the public hearing. Any more discussion? See you none? Finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes. Motion carries. Item 3.1, temporary on sale intoxicating liquor license for Minnesota Music Hall of Fame. And that's for April 27, 2019.
I'll move it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? See you none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. Item 4.1, winner's variance request. That's on front yard setback.
I'd like to add, the planning commission recommended approval at the meeting. We've had similar variances within our community over the past, I believe he had 17 prior variances. I don't know if Elwood wants to give any staff report on it.
This is for the property located at 1501 North Broadway, the Dairy Queen. And what they're looking at doing is adding a 20 by 20 addition to the front north side of the building, and keep it in line with the existing building. And there's three other buildings along that property, or along that block that are sitting at that same distance. And what they're looking at, keeping it forward is all the utilities and stuff coming on the backside of that, the gas, electric. And there's a freezer back there also.
Thank you, Elwood.
You don't have concerns, Elwood? I'll make a lot more ice cream for everybody. We like that.
You know, we like to see that businesses are expanding and trying to suit the needs of their customers.
I'll offer a motion to approve the application.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. Item 4.2, Black Forest Property variance request.
Go ahead.
This is for the property located at 201 First Street North, the old, the former New Ulm Wholesale Building. And they are looking at doing a change of occupancy down there, and they're looking for some off-street parking variance request. In your packet, it shows that, using the calculations that we've got there from the square footages for the office, warehouse, manufacturing, and cocktail room, that they're looking, should have 49 parking spaces. They're requesting for 20 off-street parking spaces. With the cocktail room square footage, that would require 16 spaces, parking spaces. And the office area, we've been advised that we're going to have four employees as starting off. And that's where we kind of came up with the 20, 20 amount. And also in your packet, there is some highlighted areas of some other off-street parking spaces, in case they have special events or items going on. And then going along with that is some conditions. Right here, what we've got is the applicant has granted variance for the number of off-street parking spaces required by Section 914 subdivision 2, item N of the city code, based on the uses of the property as presented by the applicant in listed below. With the cocktail room at 16,000 square feet, manufacturing at 6,656 square feet, warehouse at 8,004 square feet, and office area of 12, or 1,200 square feet, provided the following conditions are met by the applicant and subsequent owners of the property. The 20 off-street parking spaces shall be established and maintained on the property. The use of the property shall continue as described above, not exceeding the areas described herein for each use. Until the parking area is paved and striped for parking purposes, the owner shall install and maintain posts and signage of sufficient size, marking the location of parking stalls on the property. And the applicant will provide signage informing the public not to park on adjoining railroad property.
Thank you for the questions, Elwood.
I, if you do some corrections to the conditions.
I guess I have a question for Roger, if he's had a chance to review the information presented to us tonight in regards to the parking on city property.
Mr. President, Counselor Mack, I've had a number of communications and discussions with staff regarding this with Elwood and Dave Schnoebrik. And I think Elwood has recited the conditions that we think are essential if the council's going to grant this variance. The variance runs with the land. And if you do not have conditions that address the parking concerns, the property owner could change the use, or a new owner could change the use, and you could have a 4,000 square foot nightclub, where 20 stalls are definitely not going to do it. I think parking is a concern there because of the railroad tracks, the other property owner's use. So this looks like about the best compromise that I think you could come up with, if you were going to agree to grant the variance, to allow and to require them to have some parking. And this is apparently as much as they could realistically fit in the area they have available.
Correct.
Yes, Elwood, at our zoning meeting, we discussed where Furmanich is using the one lot on Valley Street. Have we had any contact with Furmanich and with the PUC, if they've got any agreements with that lot? That was a discussion.
Currently, there's no agreement. It's, you know, kind of a handshake gentleman agreement, first come, first served, to use that lot. There is another lot just north, or closer to downtown, that the PUC owns as well, that they are able to use. And then behind that shed, where we use for snow removal, they can also use that. And the PUC would stripe off the areas to, so that they had access to those buildings still. And we would go out and look to make sure no one was parking in there. And then, you know, issue a warning the first time it happened, and then withdraw that access to parking if that continues again.
So we'll be covering the striping for-
Just the striping on the property for no parking, as far as, yeah, for no parking. Don't park in this area. You know, they'll have to have someone out there to stack those cars. But it's just striping the area for no parking, so they know not to park there.
Any other questions, concerns?
Didn't I read somewhere near too that a lot of these, there's four different operations there, and they operate at different times of the day? Like, the cocktail lounge is different than at night. That's going to be different than the manufacturing time during the day. The office is a daytime thing, but that's just a couple of folks.
Correct. There was some overlapping on like Thursday and Friday afternoon, later in the afternoon with employees and with the opening of the cocktail room. And that's where we're looking at the 20 spots.
Do you foresee people just parking simply down along the street and not doing those parking lots?
Well, the street's a public street, and they're-
Yeah, I know. Don't you see that probably what's going to happen more realistically?
More than likely, yeah.
That's what I see happening too. And that's no similar to some of our other businesses in town.
Correct.
I just don't know if I see them going way up to a parking lot.
I think that might be if you have a unique situation, if you've got a special event, or, you know, promotion, or things of that nature.
It's just good to have that option there for them. You know, like you said, in case they have that special event, you're not taking up street parking, going into, you know, bleeding over in the neighborhoods. They have that option to park off-street.
I guess I feel a little more comfortable that we're outlining it now. We're trying to be proactive versus being reactive on this, on the situation. And, you know.
But I see Mr. Schnoebrik wanting to talk to us too. No?
No.
He's waiting for the next item?
No.
Mr. Marty? Anything you want to say?
No. I think it's a wonderful opportunity for this kind of business to come into our community, so I'm excited about it. But we do have to make sure that we have appropriate parking, so we don't run into problems like we have in other places, so.
Well, I think it's another way to fill a building and try something. You know, we've got unique situations around town, and this is another unique opportunity, so.
So I'm going to make a motion then to approve the application with the conditions that are listed.
Excuse me, would they be the conditions listed, or the conditions recited by Elwood Zabel? Because those, his conditions incorporate more than what's on the agenda.
Mr. Zabel's recommendation. Thank you for clarifying that.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See you none? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close no. Motion carries. Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck. Item number five, presentation for outstanding volunteers and promotion German Park, Herbie the Hedgehog.
They're ready. Everybody get ready.
Hello. My name is Ann Vogel, and I live at 516 South State Street. And thank you for putting this on the agenda. I'm actually here as the promotional agent and the personal care attendant of Herbie Hedgehog. Now, in case you're wondering who Herbie Hedgehog is, he is the unofficial official city park ranger for the city of New Ulm. It's the only one in all of the United States, and probably all of North America, which is appropriate, because New Ulm is so unique that we need to have a thing that's just for us. I tried to contact Smokey Bear, and he's way too busy. I mean, he's in charge of all the national forests, and I said, forget it. We will get our own. And he's actually an unofficial employee of the park and rec department. And you'll hear more about that in the weeks and months to come, because you have a very busy agenda, and we don't want to take undue time on your schedule. But what's going to happen tonight is that we have three outstanding people who have been big promoters of German Park ever since the restoration plans were started in 1994. That's something that all of you need to know. And if you want to know the dates, this is the big rock that's down at German Park, and I think it was Wally Bladel who engraved it. And it came from the swimming pool. When they destroyed the swimming pool, they came across this rock, and they were going to throw it away. And we said, oh, no. The Friends of German Park said, people pay big bucks for a job, for a stone this big, and instead, it's in German Park. And what's engraved on it is, German Park, the tradition continues. 1856 to 1996. Once the master plan was drawn up, it took two years to actually get the park renovated. And I'm not going to take time, but I brought all the plans, and you can go down, Tom Schmitz has a model down there, and he has a master plan. And the crowning glory of the park is finally coming to a reality. It's called the outdoor amphitheater. You had that sloping grass amphitheater, and that was just a stopgap. And they said, when the private and city funding package got to the point, that we could actually put a shovel in the ground. And right now, we are at that point. This is what should go to Tom Schmitz's office, because the shovel, I think, can get in the ground this year, because there's lots of people who came and made huge donations, and we appreciate all of that. But you have to understand, there are three people who kind of made this thing keep going down the track, like a big steam engine. You know, the railroad tracks are right behind the park, and they just kept pushing forward. One of them is Herb Shopper. And he, I think, heard about it, but I don't think he believes it. There is a statue, three feet tall, made out of bronze. He's down at German Park on the corner of the bandstand. And he's standing on a pink granite stand. And his job description is on there. When Tom Schmitz actually hired him as the unofficial official city park ranger, they said, this is what you're to do. Keep the parks neat and tidy, and encourage all others to do the same. Well, Herb did a yeoman's job when we got all the fundraising. There were hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of telephone numbers and names of people who donated. And he put all of that in his computer, and he made sure everybody was acknowledged. If that hadn't happened with that kind of groundswell of support, I don't think the park would be where it is right now. So Herb, we want you to come up and receive your medal and honor. Actually, Herbie, I found out, donated $3,000. $1,000 is in honor of Herb. There you are.
Thank you.
And it says, time today, 2019.
Time today.
All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. The next one's going to go to the middle guy here. His name is Tom Schmitz. Yes, he's an employee of the city, but he's done a lot of things above and beyond, and he's pushed the funding way over the top. And he's gotten people to say they're going to donate and pledge, and we're getting very close. So this is for you, Tom.
Thank you very much.
And it says, time today. Denny Mudda is someone who has gone the long haul. We have something called Friends of German Park. It's a deduct, it's a recognized legal entity, and you can donate, and it's tax deductible. And we have a diagonal historic walkway, which you probably all know. You ought to walk down it sometime. He's the one who always is there to take donations and get the papers engraved. So Denny, for your outstanding work and continued work, since you're one of the youngsters, we know you'll hang in there for a little longer, maybe even more than. And what we want to do is we want to make sure that the tradition continues in New Ulm. And, you know, the junior pioneers always say that when you get together is to keep the memories green, so you get a bouquet of evergreens. And you do as well. I want you to know that Herbie, he actually was okay to trim some of the hedges. They were supposed to be trimmed anyway. He didn't violate any city rules.
That's good to know.
And there you are. To keep the memory green. And the last thing is, we want to make sure that all you people know what we're talking about. So you get your own private copy. This is called homework. You can get a copy. There you go. Your names are on there, so you know, you know where your copy is. You might have to share. And here you go. And here. Okay. The last thing, I want to thank you for the time you gave us. And what I'm going to do is put right here, maybe I am, Herbie Hedgehog has a calling card. And I'm going to put that over there, so you all can take it. And it has his description. Extra ones, because I've got some that he signed. These are the unsigned ones. So you pass them down, just to make sure that you know he is really official. And pass them on to other people. And people of all ages are going to find out that New Ulm knows how to have a little bit. Thank you. Thank you, Herbie, for showing up. His name is Herbie Hedgehog. It's not Herbie the Hedgehog. He's hair Herbie Hedgehog. So feel it down for your time. We appreciate it. Hey, Herbie, we got you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I say nothing?
You may. You always do.
I want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, to all the people over the years who have contributed, have invested in favors and so on. They're the ones who should get this credit. And I also have a plan that I'll be presenting to you very shortly. Several artists are working on a way to honor, truly honor, the man who designed the layout of this town. His name is Christian Prignitz, who in 1856, when there was no idea of an automobile, designed this city. Unfortunately, he didn't know about roundabouts, because there weren't no cars at that time. But you will hear about it. But thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wanted to say one thing. New Ulm is so unique in so many things. But the biggest thing we've got going is the people that work for the community, that continually put out their efforts and their time. And sometimes, there's moments when the things get a little testy, because we're not sure which direction we're all going. But we resolve our issues, we get it done. But one of the nice little features is that here, we've got New Ulm, in the downtown area, five consecutive blocks of ground that's dedicated to the community. Tell me another town in Minnesota that's got five blocks like that outside of the metropolitan earth. Because here, we've got the baseball park on one end, that's an anchor, the football park. Then we've got German Park as the anchor on the other. And then besides that, we could jump over center and get some more. But those are the fine things about this community. And let's keep it going, keep New Ulm on top. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll go on to the next item. Change order for the City Hall Carpet Replacement Project. Elwood?
Counselors, presidents, and counselors, there was, went through our carpet replacement here at City Hall. And in doing so, when they ripped up the old carpet, found out that the floor leveller that was used back 20 years ago had deteriorated and broken up. When they came around, and we were bidding the project, they took their samples along the, along the walls, where they could cut the carpet and nobody would notice. All the places where the filler was deteriorated and stuff was in the center of the rooms. All the places where the filler was deteriorated and stuff was in the center of the rooms. In some places, it went from level on the existing floor to a three-quarter inch depth in some places in just a very short period of time. So we had numerous extra bags and time involved in prepping the floor to put the new carpet down.
So how I read this, there's an overage of $20,002.4?
Correct.
And that happens sometimes with these old buildings. You never know what happens when you pull up carpets. So I'm going to go ahead and offer a motion to approve the change order.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I will say that we're going to note this kind of in the file, so when this project comes along again, they know kind of what's going on beneath the surface. So stuff like this doesn't, won't happen, hopefully, in the future.
Sounds good. And no more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Calls, no? Motion carries. We're going to skip item 6.2 and bring that one up as the last item. That's selecting a city manager. So we'll go on. Do I have to have a motion to that or can I just skip?
No, I think you can just move.
Just go for it, okay. We did it.
President.
We're going to do item 7.1, Downtown Action Team Parking Lot Sign Project. Carla?
Okay. Kara Knopf, representing the Downtown Action Team. I don't know how I can follow Doc Ann with that great presentation. Cindy is handing out maps of the downtown public parking lots. And what we're looking for this evening is approval to give the parking lots names. One of our projects this year is to add new banners downtown, wayfinding signs, and then signs denoting where the public parking lots are. I asked my husband, who's now lived here for four years, and he had no clue where any of them are. Currently, they're numbered and a lot of people don't know what the numbers are or where they even are. We had a Hot Topics Lunch on Friday discussing this. And in your packets, the names, for example, are Fourth North Park Lots. Based on feedback at the Hot Topics Lunch, we added the Cross Street for each of the names. So this is an example of the sign, what it's going to look like. The bottom portion is what's going to have the name. And it coordinates with our wayfinding signs, which coordinates with the banners, which coordinates with the bench and plaques, bench table plaques that we're doing, which also coordinates with the Broadway banners that are coming up. So it's all going to be branding together. So what we're looking for, for example, is Fourth North and Minnesota Park Lots, Third North and Park Lots, Center and Broadway Park Lots, to indicate to people where this is. It's got to get a little German in there. So we're not asking for money from the city. This is going to be paid for with Minnesota Main Street Mini Grant Funds. And so we're basically just looking for approval of changing the names from, for example, Lot 7, Lot 10, Lot 12, to these names this evening.
Thank you. Any questions for Carla?
Do you see a need, Kara, to have the parking lot, like the two-hour parking, one-hour parking, having that included in the signs? Or do you see there's enough signage for that? It's what I don't, I see parking and then there'll be the name, but I'm almost thinking underneath that it should be two-hour parking or one-hour parking. Can we add that? Or do you think there's enough signage that we don't need that?
I think. Come on, Cindy.
Everybody's looking for that. Some are two, some are...
Cindy Winters, Heart of New Ulm Project. I think when you look at that, so many of the parking lots are split, that if you're just trying to name and identify where the parking lots are so that when people are driving, they can find them, it would be hard to put two-hour parking, leased parking, three-hour parking. Your parking lot name sign is going to get rather large. And they're all, once you're in the lot, they're really well marked as to what's leased, what's two hours, what's three hours.
So for the future, things that we advertise in our community, we could say, you know, whatever the German Park Plats, parking lot, that's where you want to go, or type of thing, right? Or whatever it has to be.
Correct, yeah.
So once the customer finds that sign, they know where they're supposed to be. That's the part of the call.
Right, indicating a public parking lot.
Right.
Right.
Makes sense to me.
And we could talk further about the hours and things like that in the future. We're just getting...
Well, there's already signs there for that. I just didn't know if it makes sense to repeat it on the sign or not, especially if you can get Main Street to pay for it, but...
But then the sign would get awfully large.
It would get large, yeah.
We really just want to indicate that this is where you can park. We noticed on the city website, a lot of it, you pull up the map of the downtown and it says, "Do not park here, 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 here." But it doesn't say, "Here's where you can park." So that's what we're going on.
So you are talking the size of the sign. How big are they? How big?
However big we want to make them. So we're thinking...
What's your intent?
I don't have the statistics in front of me. I believe it's 24 inches tall.
Two feet tall?
About two feet.
Roger, you got that?
Yeah, I do. Mr. President, looking at the map, there's one parking lot that is solely leased parking and is a business that leases at least four stalls in that and frequently has private individuals parking in a leased stall. Is there a reason why that would be included? I mean, the public isn't supposed to be parking there unless they're leasing.
Right, no. I think, so that's why we handed this out, is because that was a change from what we presented to you earlier from the Hot Topics Luncheon, is that those parking lots that are strictly just leased parking will not have a sign, but they will still have a name.
Well, just are they going to show up on a map for the public?
Will show up on a map because if people are looking for places to park...
But they're not going to, if they're looking to lease, well, all right.
The leased lots are currently on the map.
Right.
So we're not asking them to be taken off.
Which is maybe why people are parking there, but all right. Not that big of a deal.
Or do you suggest we put a sign that says, you know, "Center in Minnesota Park Lots, leased parking only?"
Well, it says leased parking now and that's not preventing people in a lot itself. So if it's going to show that it's leased, presumably people will get the word, I guess.
You know, one way to solve that issue, I mean, is just to take that, because it's fully leased, just to take it off the map entirely. So there's no really identifying mark that it's a place to park.
It's all leased, it's not public.
Yeah, so you take it off the map. You know, there's no confusion anymore. You know, that's an easy fix, you know.
It becomes complicated because most of the lots are either half and half or just one row is leased and things like that. So it gets confusing for people.
Do we need a motion?
Any other questions? None? Thank you.
Okay.
We need to approve it. I'm going to offer the motion to approve the Downtown Action Team's recommendations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Calls, no? Motion carries. Item 7.2, Appointment of the Energy Awareness Commission, or Appointment to the Energy Awareness Commission. Mr. Boyceman?
Kim Rockvam has expressed a desire to be a member of the Energy Awareness Commission. And I've been looking for quite a while for that person. And voila, one showed. I still have one more vacancy. So if there's anybody else that would like to join, Kim Rockvam, why, just come and see me or send me a message. We'll see if we can do it.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Calls, no? Motion carries. Item 7.3, BNL Bar Alley Closure for Dart Tournament. And that is for April 6, 2019, and April 7, 2019.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
Is that with conditions?
With conditions.
With conditions?
With the conditions.
Okay.
Second, with conditions.
No more discussion? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7.5, Police Department Donations.
7.4.
7.4.
About 7.4.
Well, maybe I can do it.
I don't have a link. I don't have a link.
It's a blank one. That's our software.
The form.
Something ate it, huh? Okay.
Our software ate the form.
Designate Brown County Fair as a community festival.
This was just kind of an addition. Right now, the county uses their 3-2 license to be able to sell beer during the fair. 3-2 beer is kind of going away and they want to sell something a little stronger. So they're asking to be able to get more than one temporary liquor license to cover the entire period of the fair instead of just the four-day normal temporary license. So by making it a community festival, we can sell them more than one license in that 30-day period.
Sounds okay to me.
Yeah. I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? That's a resolution, waived reading. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. All right, now we'll go to item 7.5, Police Department Donations.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading to accept the donations. A $200 from Tony Arnt, $100 from a professional referral organization, and a $30 anonymous donation. This has to do with the SHOPA, with the HERO program. So thank you to those. And the mayor will write some thank you letters, I would guess, right?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? See a none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7.6, The Renew Dome Project. Mr. Dalton?
All right. So we received an initial cost estimate for the renewed projects down at the Vogel Field House. And there is a shortfall based on the current budget of $9 million. And if we're taking a look at the dome project, that was a project that has, still has a lot of moving parts. You know, there wasn't a location, still determining that. Tom Schmitz, the Park and Rec Director, had conversations with MLC. And at this point in time, they have pulled back from allowing us to use their land and donate and invest some money into the dome project. So it is my recommendation that we choose not to move forward with the dome project and allocate that 3.5 million to other renewed projects. How I see that kind of breaking down is sending about $3 million to the Vogel Field House projects, which will get us to a project total of about $12 million. So that'll be soft costs and about $10 million per construction. There'll be about $500,000 left over, which you can assign to a different project. Could be the Herman Heights project, could be the Johnson Park. You know, that's really your call. But that's how I would like to see that funding split up between the projects and open to any feedback from the councilors.
Thank you, Chris. More discussion?
I know it's certainly, when the voters voted this in, this wasn't our top project, but it was certainly one that, when you think of the winter, we just lived through. Having the availability to have an indoor domed field for adults and kids would have been really nice. So I'm really sad to see this project go away by this vote. But I understand the reasoning and the costs are just keep climbing with the Vogel project. But, and I know we've had some real difficulty trying to figure out where to put this thing because nobody, it's a great project, but nobody wants it in their backyard. So I hate to vote for it, but I think I will support the elimination of this project.
I guess, the Renew Committee, you know, Oversight Committee met and also recommends this action after, you know, reviewing all of our options and the cost of construction going up. And it is, it was when we prioritized those projects, this was kind of...
It was last, right?
It was last.
I thought it was.
So it is a tough decision to think that we're not going to probably follow through with that, but it's probably a necessary action. So I support it.
I would agree also, you know, and I was, I was there in the beginning with the renewed process when we started with two dozen projects and we narrowed it down. And, but we didn't have solid numbers on all the projects, you know. We gave a ballpark where we were going to budget to. And we never, you know, this was going to be a seasonal dome that we were going to set up and down with continued costs, you know. The conversations in the last two years have been, maybe we make it a year-round structure, you know. And to move the projects forward here for future for Renew and so we can get some action taken and because of the costs, you know. And I think with Renew, we never really factored in soft costs, you know, what, you know, we had a number for what we're going to build, but you know, when you have to retain architects and project managers and all these little details. So I would support, you know, removal of this and Chris's thoughts, you know, up for discussion, you know, for future, for maybe either Herman Heights Hillside or other things.
Anybody else? I also agree. I think we need to get moving and we've been dragging our feet and get these projects going before costs go up. So I think we need to do it. Entertainer motion?
I'll offer a motion to discontinue the planning of the Renew Dome Project and authorize those funds, approximately $3.5 million, to be allocated to the Rec Center Renew Projects and/or Herman.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I guess, you know, I agree with the project, but not being done. But I'm not quite sure if we want to allocate all of those funds to the Rec Center Renew Project. Do we, can we have some more discussion of where those funds actually will go or...
I think it's too early to decide exactly where they go.
Right, so I don't know if we want to designate that in our motion.
I think those are the only projects really left.
I think the motion just said other Renew projects.
I said Renew projects or...
Located to the Recreation Center.
Rec Center Renew Projects. And I said Herman.
And you said Herman, yeah.
No, to include Herman.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we're not bound to putting it on the Rec Center if we decide to...
Well, I could amend my motion if you want to...
To be discussed or to...
Let's give more, a little more flexibility.
I could do that.
Well, I would like to just kind of throw this out there that, you know, when we're looking at the architect and the construction manager, the construction cost is kind of what's holding up the contract. So we need to determine what that amount is going to be as far as how much money we're going to put towards the Rec Center project. You know, you guys are more than welcome to discuss, but if we want, if you're going to wait till the next meeting so you can have that discussion, again, that'll be another two-week delay in moving forward with the project because both the construction manager and the architect can't get their contract until we figure out what that construction budget is going to be. You know, throwing that out there for you guys to mull over.
Do we want to do it underneath this proposal or just one or the others? It's probably best here, though, right?
Yeah, I'd be, but you guys are open. What I was suggesting was about a $12 million total project budget for the Field House projects. When you take away the soft costs, roughly about $2 million, you have about 10 left for construction. you have about ten left for construction, and based on the projections, that's fairly close, where we can cut down some of the square footage and get what we need, and do all the projects that we said we were gonna do at the Field House, and then you would still have some money left over to do, you know, put towards another project, but that decision is up to you guys.
Well, I think we need to go back to our original motion here, and the original discussion here was the Dome Project, whether to keep it or not.
All right, we can do that first.
Mr. President, I think, I think the way you expressed the motion, it's just to discontinue the planning of that. I mean, if somewhere there'd be a windfall, and, you know, someone else was gonna be contributing money, doesn't mean you can't do it, but it's just as far as prioritizing, the city is not obligated to do all of the projects, but I think as, you know, the city manager was pointing out, it's something where we gotta start moving on some of these, and the question of the Rec Center projects, it's kind of a chicken egg thing, because we need to get some kind of preliminary budget, but the soft costs are also, now with the construction manager, they're getting a percentage of what the costs are gonna be, so they just kind of keep feeding off of each other. I think if you just, if you see the need to allocate some of this to that, the rest of it is still out there to be determined, and one of the factors, and we're not gonna get into this tonight, we've got a lot of other things that you have to do, but during the Renew Projects, several times it's come up the question of the Herman Hill condition, which we now have a closed sidewalk, we've got the wall collapsing in multiple places, that committee, it's got another meeting scheduled, we're focusing in on a couple of plans. It's my belief that the city could justify wrapping some or all of those costs into the project to rebuild the entryway into that park. It's all part of the same hill, the same park. There's questions about budgeting for the German Park Project, you know, somehow this has all got to get sorted out, but this might free up some money to be able to get that done, so we can get rid of that safety risk. But I don't know, aside from possibly allocating something, as Counselor Mack has said in his motion, I think that would give the discretion to let us focus in on the costs that are gonna be involved for the Rec Center.
So.
Was your own?
Well, you want me to amend my motion, you know, so, I mean.
Maybe just restate it.
Should I just restate it stating to designate those funds, or just to leave them kind of out there in the wild, and we can?
You know, like I said, you know, you have about that three and a half million, if we were gonna get about three million of it, and you'd still have that five hundred thousand left for the hillside if you wanted to designate that, where that way, we would have our total, essentially, cover the cost for the Field House, and then can pare that down to get where we need to get.
I guess to be, to the extent that the council has previously specifically allocated the division of these funds to the different projects, and I don't know if that's in the record someplace, if we've done that in the past, then maybe Mr. Schmitz knows that, but if, if that's a position that the council has taken, then it would be appropriate to clarify it, and if you decide to put three million more into the Rec Center Renew Projects, then that should be something you would be voting on, so we have a record on it.
And are we voting on that tonight?
I don't know.
Well, that's.
Do we wanna commit to that, putting three million dollars into that more?
I'm thinking right now.
Discontinue planning right now, that's it.
To make the motion to drop the Dome Project, and then we have those funds for yet to be determined.
Renew Projects.
For future Renew Projects.
Because one of the things is, and again, we talked about how these are tied together, but, you know, one of the sales pitches for the construction manager at risk is that they're gonna save us all this money when they're actually planning this with the architect. So that's all to be determined. We've got the agenda item for you tonight to approve spending a half million dollars approximately for this construction manager, and if these funds are gonna be saved, you know, we don't know what the cost of this is going to be. Part of that's gonna depend upon the design you ultimately approve, what'll be in and what'll be out, so. I think with what you're saying, at least, we're not gonna be, the staff is not gonna be spending time working on a dome when that is not likely to happen, so that would be accomplished, so.
Right, right.
I'm gonna do this one more time and just be done. I'm gonna amend my motion, and my motion is gonna be to discontinue planning the Renew Dome Project for the community, and we will take those funds and use them, at this point in time, we'll designate them aside until we further discuss which Renew Projects are gonna need those funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? See you none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no, motion carries. Item seven point seven, Renew Daycare.
Chris?
Okay, so, this was brought up a while ago, when we were looking at, you know, possibly canceling the Dome Project, that there would be money left over to fund a daycare facility, but with the Renew, or with the estimates that we got for the projects down at the Field House, this project is something that there, it wouldn't be Renew money for, and so the recommendation is to exclude further looking into a daycare facility with Renew funds, and possibly looking at other sources of funding for such a facility down the road.
I'm not sure this even needed to be a council action, but for what the reasons you just said, that this was not part of the Renew Project by any means, so it shouldn't be here, but it is an issue, it is a concern, we need to address it, but we do have the EDA as potential option, we, you know, the city could partner with that somewhere down the line in another totally different way, but it should not be part of Renew, so I'll just go ahead and offer the motion to exclude funding for the daycare facility.
I will second that. I am in support of daycare and looking at other, down the line, put it up at one of our work sessions and discuss it for possible funding within our community.
So to keep that moving, and I agree that this is a crisis in our community, so how do we keep that moving? I mean, it's here now, and we, we obviously see that it's not a fit with Renew, but what's our next step? I don't wanna leave this here now and not have.
I think you go to a work session for more, more discussion.
Good idea.
Let's do that.
What are our options, and we have to be careful with it, because there are other entities running businesses with daycare, but how can we promote a startup, and I think that's where our concentration should be in.
Yep.
We'll have another work session after our next meeting this month, we can, you know. Just put it on the agenda.
Just, this item was presented to us approximately six months ago, and, by Toby Fryer, and he was looking at other.
Yep. Originally, I thought it was a great idea.
Yeah, it's a great concept, but then we started, you know, we gotta change the legislation, and, you know, go through a lot of loops, and we wanna keep the project rolling here at this point in time, so.
Okay, any more discussion? See you none, on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, no, motion carries. Seven point eight, Renew Johnson Park Set Bid Opening Date. It's in front of you here, it's for Thursday, April twenty fifth, two thousand nineteen, at two P M, at the City Hall Council Chambers.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion and a second off the resolution, waived reading, any more discussion? See you none, finance director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Mack.
Yes.
Counselor Schultz.
Yes.
Counselor Christian.
Yes.
President Schmitz.
Yes, motion carries. Item seven point nine, Renew Recreation Center Bid Award Construction Manager. Chris?
So, our request for proposal for a construction manager at Risk Services went live on March fourth, RFPs were due March twenty second, we received a total of nine proposals, they were reviewed by myself, our building official, our Parks and Rec Facility Maintenance Supervisor, and the Lead Architect at J L G, that's in charge of our project. R J M was the winner as far as points go, they did have a fee of five hundred and forty-seven, three hundred, thirty-eight dollars. The next second place, or in second, was Newson Construction with three hundred and thirty points, and their fee was four hundred and ninety-six, fifty-four dollars. Taking that into consideration, the fee was twenty-five percent of the total score, so the fact that R J M scored sixteen more points than Newson, when fee was twenty-five percent of the score, speaks volumes to what staff and the architect thought of the proposal. But breaking it down further, you know, as far as aquatic experience went, R J M had submitted five projects that they worked on, where Newson Construction only proposed one, again, with recreation center experience, R J M submitted five projects that they worked on, Newson, they put it, they had multiple examples, but a lot of them were for private business owners, and then the construction manager at Risk Experience, what we were really looking for through this process, R J M, they submitted, three of their five examples using C M R was with government owners, and that's really what we need, because it is new for the city to use this, and we're gonna need their experience to help guide Roger through the process, guide us through the process, to, you know, hand those contracts over. Newson Construction, they submitted four examples of that, but none of them were with government owners, and I think that's really where Newson fell short, and then, when we did the comparison of bumping up that construction, total construction cost to ten million dollars, it really broke down to a thirty-seven thousand dollar difference in price, and I feel, and staff feels, that this thirty-seven thousand dollars will make, will make up for that in the long run through the construction process, and with the experience that they bring to the table guiding this, guiding us through.
In the comparison, a question that came up, that it had the pre-construction hours proposed, R J M Construction proposed three hundred and eighty-three hours, Canutson has six hundred and nineteen hours. Are we sure that R J M didn't miss something, or is it because of their experience in other projects, probably?
I would go with that, it's their experience working on their projects, when you look at what they've done, it.
This seemed like such a pretty huge gap.
It's, that's all they've worked with is Y M C As, Rec Center projects, where the one thing that, you know, as far as aquatic experience goes, they worked on Treasure Island Resort, and that was one pool, you know, I can only really go on what they had in their proposal, you know, and that was based on that.
So you don't see a concern with that number? All right, that was my, my main, one of my main concerns. I just don't want them to come back and say, oh yeah, oops.
No, I think they, they, their proposal, and in speaking with them, you know, previously on, on the interviews and things like that, they're, they're spot on.
So do we have any additional cost, like percent of the project, or anything else, or is this gonna be it?
That should be it, I mean, if, let's say we go, you know, there, this is based on eleven months of construction, if it goes to twelve months, yes, it'll go up, but both companies will go up, but if it takes ten months instead of eleven, the cost goes down, and really, depending on how fast we go through this motion to get the project done.
So do we have any control over the time?
I mean, they're gonna stick, if they say eleven months, they're gonna stick to that schedule and push for it, you know, and if they can get it done sooner, they'll get it done sooner, but, you know, we can't control weather.
No.
Things like that.
There's no penalty clauses or anything in the contracts? Like some projects, we do, we'll throw a completion date and then a penalty in.
Mr. President, there haven't been any contracts actually submitted yet, so those are all things to be determined, and there absolutely better be a substantial completion date, there better be some penalty provisions in it, you know, but this is all stuff to be determined, once, once we get, if we make the selection, then we'll be having to work out the details on their contract. Likewise, I don't think a contract's been signed with the architect.
No, because we're still waiting for the total construction cost, because their fee is a percentage of the construction cost.
Right, so, everything is kind of up in the air.
Okay, any more questions?
I'd like to add, at the Renew meeting, I was questioning, you know, the initial here fifty-one thousand dollars difference, you know, you know, that's a lot of money, you know, and questioning the hours, but until, you know, seeing more information here tonight in front of me with the rating, which, you know, helps explain a few things maybe, and more in detail with the government agencies and that aspects, but it's, it's still, still a lot of money.
It's a lot of money.
And you could buy a lot of fitness equipment or other things, too, so.
Yep, I understand where Chris is coming from, though, I guess, if it's something new, we don't wanna get caught and end up with tail between our legs on that one.
And experience can pay off, that's for sure, I, so I'm gonna go.
You get what you pay for.
I'll go ahead and approve the Renew Rec Center Projects and award the bid for construction manager to R J M Construction, an amount of five seventy-seven and thirty-nine dollars, based on a construction cost of ten million.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion?
Do we, now, the ten million, is that, is that kind of what we discussed before?
That's kind of what we discussed before.
So we're committing.
Yeah, I mean, you can come back and say nine million, which will lower that fee, but based on the estimates that were provided, you know, ten million construction cost is what we're looking at, you know, and if you guys wanna come back at the next council meeting to really determine what that fee is, or what the total fee for that Rec Center is, because you haven't made that decision, you just said the money is available for those projects, you know, we can do that, or as part of this one, you wanna say, yes, three million dollars goes to Rec Center, so we have our total construction fee, that's, that's up to you, but I'm, either way, I'll leave that decision to you guys.
I think somewhere along the line, we're gonna have to.
Set them all.
Set them all, because we gotta have some guidance where, Tom, where he's gonna go, we aren't gonna let him come in and say, oh, I've got twenty million dollars, now where, here we go.
Yeah.
You know, we, we do have, and I'll say it many times, fourteen point eight million, and I don't have any intentions exceeding that regardless, so.
I agree. Tom Schmitz, Park and Recreation Department, President Schmitz and counselors, what we're asking of you here now is to set a budget for the Renew Projects, the four Renew Projects at the Rec Center. We need to set that budget so we can move forward with planning, consummate a contract with the architect and a second contract with the construction manager, based upon a project budget for those four projects. That's what the ten million dollar construction cost, that's our latest information, the latest and greatest estimates for the indoor water park, the aquatics improvements, the gymnastics center and wellness center. That is the updated construction cost estimate is ten million dollars, and there will be an additional approximately two million dollars in design and soft costs. So that's the recommended budget, total of twelve, construction of ten, and that's.
And do we still have Herman, and we still had Johnson Field, so are we gonna be within that fourteen point eight?
Yes, we will. Johnson budget is one million dollars.
Speak a little louder into the mic.
We're recommending to go to bid, and the preliminary cost estimates up at Herman have been, you know, from seven hundred to nine hundred K, so the, if you're going with twelve million at the Rec Center, and round up to two million for Johnson and Herman, you're still sitting on eight hundred grand. So I'm confident we're gonna hold it at that, that's what we need to establish is the baseline project budgets and move forward.
So we could go with nine point five instead of ten, and then have a little break room in there?
Well, I'm saying, you already have a room, you already have eight hundred grand, we've got, we're talking twelve million at the Rec Center, a million at Johnson, a million at Herman, that's fourteen million, you got another eight hundred grand in cushion.
And part of that ten million construction cost, there's about a million and a half in, built in for contingency that we may or may not use for that, for the Renew Project, or the Field House Project, so that's part of that ten million dollar budget as well, you know, just taking that into consideration.
Are we planning on equipment and everything in that, for the, for the fitness center?
Some new equipment is in that projected, those projected estimates. You know, we've got some existing equipment that, you know, is still quite serviceable, but there will be some new equipment needs, F and F furnishings, and that is in our estimates up to date.
And some that isn't, where's that coming from?
We do not anticipate needing any more funds for these projects.
I guess, you know, when, way back when we talked about this, I didn't think we were gonna use our maximum amount that we were allowed, I thought we were gonna kind of give us, you know, a little buffer there, not use the whole fourteen point eight, whatever we.
I know where you're coming from, but.
Excuse me, go ahead.
You know, it's, we do have fourteen million, fourteen point eight, but I tell you, with businesses closing and stuff like that, and looking down the road twenty years from now, we gotta be very, very careful, because we're gonna have to pay that back.
I mean, are we out of line by going to nine five tonight, till we get solid numbers from the architect and the manager and more details, you know, we can always amend it later, at a later date, and then that allows us a five hundred thousand dollar cushion, you know, if anything, I'd rather come in at fourteen, fourteen two with everything and not go to the full extent. That's just my outlaw thinking with uncertainties. That's just my outlaw thinking with uncertainties with retail.
One of the things, let me speak, I've not been intimately involved, not been involved at all in any of the discussions with the architect about cost estimates, but I think with the rec center project, one thing that is unique is you've got the gymnastics facility, which I think people keep estimating at around 3 million. Um, you've got the fitness center, there might be some fairly hard numbers on that. And then you've got the water park aquatics part of this. And, you know, it's, it's all one part of the budget, but it's three very different things. And I don't know if at some point something's going to have to give in that, if these costs keep going up. Uh, that's details that, you know, staff will be working out with the architect, but at the end of the day, I'm just not sure what we're going to end up with for this water park, if that's where things keep getting cut back. And, you know, who's making the decision? Are we putting more money into gymnastics and less into that, or more into the water park and less into gymnastics? So we haven't really seen, there've been some general designs on the gymnastics facility. I don't think I've seen too much on the water park part of this.
Well, and that, well, go ahead, go ahead. Um, you know, and that really goes to, you know, finally getting that construction cost. We can actually sit down now with the architect and say, hey, we have 9.5 million for construction. Now let's start shaping some of that stuff out, cause really what our preliminary estimate on is kinda your pie in the sky kinda look at things where they dedicate, I think it was like 17,000 square feet to a water park. Well, if we cut off 2,000 square feet of that, that saves us, you know, maybe a million dollars in construction, and what do you lose? You know, we don't know, cause they, they didn't design what was in that water park. It's just, hey, on 17,000 square feet, it was, you know, $450 a square foot or something like that, and they gave us a number. So now if we say, hey, we have 15,000 square feet because you only have 9.5 million in construction, they can design what's in there, and I still think we will get what we promised to the community, a water park, you know, a pool and those amenities. But we, you know, nailing down that construction budget is really what's gonna move this project forward, and we can start shaping those ideas and cut what we need to cut to be within budget and below budget, but, you know, it's really getting that initial budget down for us to start moving forward.
Remind me where the boilers fit into this project, Tom?
Uh, the boilers are not a part of renew whatsoever. You have authorized that into the 2019 budget and will be coming to you in two weeks to authorize going out for bids. The design is almost complete and, um, there's, you put about a million dollars into this year's budget, non-renew, um, capital, um, money, and our preliminary, uh, co, updated cost estimates from our consulting engineer are, um, denoting a significant savings, um, under a million dollars for that boiler replacement project.
But we'll, we'll see what those numbers come in when we bid them out, but based on the estimates right now, it's significantly lower.
Well, it sounds like we have, what he, what Tom is saying is an $800,000 saving, a one and a half million contingency on, on, as well, so we got, you know, 2 million here. So I think I'm gonna leave my motion as, as it stands for the 10.
I think, I, I guess I'm comfortable with that, um, the 10 million designated for that and the million designated for Herman, that puts us at three, or at, um, Johnson with the soft costs of-
A little over 12, right?
Yeah, 12.
Yeah.
Well, it would be 13, wouldn't it? Cause there's 2 million in soft costs, so we get 10 and 12, and then a million down there, we're already at 13. And then we've got the parking lot at Herman, which is-
Herman estimated at 800 grand.
800 grand.
We don't have a design yet, but that was a preliminary estimate.
And you've got your-
13.8, right?
Yeah.
13.8. So, um, the only other issue that we have is, is the wall, you know, are we gonna try and include some, something with the Herman wall on that? I'm okay with those projects, the 10 million there and the soft cost of, of two and million there and 800,000 there, but it's the wall, are we gonna-
We have 200 already budgeted for that.
Right, we have 200 budgeted, and I don't, I don't see that, those funds changing. I would think we-
Did not carry those funds over.
They remain in the park and rec fund balance, and I think Nicole might have an update on where we ended 2018 with the park and rec fund balance.
I do not yet. We are going, we are going through the audit this week, so I don't have final numbers.
We do have, uh, some, uh, fund balance, uh, dollars available for future Herman wall expenses.
Right, there was like 200,000, I thought.
Correct.
Right, okay, so we have 200,000 there, so until we would have a number for that wall, we don't know what renew funds-
What we've been, the committee has been seeing is estimated approximately a half million. Dave, would you agree with that?
So 500,000?
Yeah, for the retaining wall.
So another 300,000 from, from renew.
Right, yeah.
So that puts it at 14.1.
But we don't know where Johnson, we're going out for bids on Johnson. We don't know that it's gonna be a big, we don't think it's gonna be a half.
Our design, our, our entire budget was $1 million, and that's what the consultant has designed towards, and, um, we will be opening bids later this month.
I just like going personally less myself, because what if that comes in 100,000 over? Then there we sit already, you know, now we're starting to eat up everything.
Yeah, I guess I-
We have got nothing in yet, you know, we're, we're throwing a lot of numbers out. That's-
Right, we are.
I got a problem with that.
I guess I'd rather start at 9.5, leave us sort of a buffer zone, and then we can see what the architect can build for us for bang for our buck for the facility, and then we gotta come back at there and have more discussions. And then that allows us a buffer, you know, to give or take, you know, cause it's yet to be determined.
Hmm.
I'm just hoping that that's not gonna create just more meetings, more time.
Well, we're gonna have a lot already. We got big decisions with the Vogel, you know?
I'll, I'll amend my motion to 9.5 versus the 10. I don't know who seconded that, though.
You did.
David? Okay with that? Mr. Laryngitis Man?
We had a motion in a second for 9.5. Any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
And, 10, or 7.10, renew Target store property. Chris?
So, um, we were looking at the Target department store for possible, um, location for some of the renew projects, uh, and we were able to go out and take a look at the inside, um, of this building. Um, the ceiling height in there, you know, looks are deceiving from the outside. It looked like it had adequate ceiling height for, um, some of the projects, but when you walked in, the ceiling heights were about, um, 16 to the tiles and probably 18 to the bottom of the, the joists. And based on that information, we couldn't even put one of the projects in there, uh, which would be gymnastics, um, based on what our architect was saying. And looking at USA gymnastics websites, you need anywhere from 22 to 28 feet of clearance. Um, so the Target building itself wouldn't be a viable option for that. Um, on top of that, um, when you start cutting out some of those projects, um, Roger did have, um, a concern that if you're just putting a wellness center in the Target building, um, you know, it's only about 10% of the space. Could you even use renew money to purchase the Target building? Um, and then, uh, because you're only using it for that small space, and it was his opinion that, um, that probably wouldn't, uh, be okay, um, use of renew funds. So, um, bringing this to the council to make a decision on it, you know, it's my recommendation to not move forward with the, um, pursuing the Target department store as, um, an area for the renew projects to go, um, you know, but maybe it's something down the road we can look at for future, future planning, um, but to kinda take this off the table for renew projects.
Thank you. Any questions for Chris? I think we all went out, we all seen it, and we all understand, so.
Yeah.
We did our due diligence to look at that as an option, and so I'm gonna offer the motion as stated.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. Item 7.11, set bid opening date for this 2019 utility street and alley improvements group one project. Mr. Kaler?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've got our plan set ready to go, and we're recommending that the plans be approved, and we set a bid opening date for later this month. We'll bring the numbers back.
Bid opening date is set for Tuesday, April 30th, 2019, City Hall Council Chambers at 10 a.m.
I'm sorry, I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion? Seeing none? Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7.12, Minnesota Timberwolves Fast Break Foundation Baseball Court Grant Application. Tommy, you got something on that?
Thank you, President Schmitz and counselors. This is just a request to apply for a small grant application to the Minnesota Timberwolves for some modest improvements at the basketball court at Hansios Park, resurfacing and restriping. Uh, I recommend that you allow us to apply for this grant.
I'll offer the resolution, waive the reading, authorizing the grant application.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, offer the resolution, waive the reading. Any more discussion?
As you stated, there's no matching grant, so that's good.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks for looking at the option.
Finance Director, please call a roll.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
President Schmitz?
Yes, motion carries. Item 7.13, first consideration of ordinance number 19 dash 032. Mr. Schnobruck?
Dave Schnobruck, Community Development Director. Uh, the city council, I previously asked the staff to have the planning commission investigate the establishment of, um, procedures and requirements for interim uses. Interim uses are something that are found in many zoning ordinances, um, in Minnesota communities. Minnesota State Statute 462.3597 provides a definition for interim uses, and you'll find a copy of that, um, page from the state statutes in your agenda packet. Uh, the planning commission is authorized to initiate changes to the zoning ordinance, and so the planning commission conducted a public hearing on this particular item at their, um, March 28th meeting. They unanimously recommended approval, um, of the ordinance. Um, the ordinance has 12 subdivisions. A copy of the ordinance is in your agenda packet as well. Uh, there are two subdivisions, I think, bear a little bit closer review. Uh, one is subdivision two, which defines the intent of the ordinance, so it identifies situations in which an interim use could be permitted. And then subdivision five identifies the review criteria in order to approve an interim use. Um, so this would be adding a new section to our zoning ordinance, section 9.22. And what the ordinance does is it, um, expands the city's ability to accommodate different land uses in different zoning locations.
Thank you, Dave. Any questions, concerns for Dave?
Mr. President, if I just make briefly, I'd, um, I'd strongly urge you to approve this. This is, well, this is just the first consideration tonight, uh, thanks to the change in our charter. We no longer have to read this. Um, but this will give us and you an additional tool to use for development, where in the past with conditional uses, um, some variances, they filed a land forever, possibly. Um, this will be something where when you have a situation that is truly either temporary or kinda remains to be seen, you might be able to take some action that will seem appropriate, but not necessarily tie up the property forever, um, with the decisions that you make. So I'd urge you to ultimately approve this at the next consideration.
Yeah, I'd just like to add, I, I brought this, uh, to the council work session and asked staff to take a look at this, uh, for unique situations for filling buildings within our community. Gives us an opportunity to see what works, what doesn't work, um, you know, what works today might not work in 20 years from now. And this, we could, if an individual wanted to rent a building, we could do it for the life of the lease. And like Roger states, it doesn't follow to the longevity of the building, so.
Thank you. No more discussion? We'll go on to item 8.1, reported claims, except list of claims paid in amount of $1,501,688.44 and a list of claims to be paid in amount of $443,779.30.
I'll offer the motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, no, motion carries. At this time, we'll go back to item 6.2, if you wanna leave, Chris?
Yes.
It's up to you.
You guys discuss.
All right, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Oh, we'll go back here, see what-
Upstairs wants it on DVD.
Mm-hmm. Okay, we'll go, item 6.2, select the city manager and authorize the personnel committee to negotiate an agreement.
Go ahead, Gary.
All right, thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here with you this evening. Uh, before we get to the discussion about a possible decision, I'd just like to recap a little bit about the process. I'll be very brief in that. Uh, this process was, uh, was long and involved, as you all know. There were originally 30 applicants for the position. Uh, the city council, uh, selected the five finalists who were interviewed over the last two days. The interview process started yesterday. Uh, the council spent, um, almost all day conducting interviews of the five candidates that consisted of a, about a 50 to 55 minute interview, and then each candidate had been previously asked to prepare a presentation for the council. That was another 15 minutes, uh, from each of them as well. Last evening, or late afternoon, uh, the, there was a community meet and greet event held at the fire station or fire hall. Um, this morning, uh, candidates were interviewed, each candidate was interviewed by a panel of your, uh, department heads. I think that was a group of about 12, um, and the council, uh, each of the department heads was asked to fill out, uh, not an evaluation form, but to provide some insight about their observations about each candidate. Uh, that has been previously shared this afternoon with the, uh, city council. Um, after that was done, uh, this late morning, early afternoon, there was a city tour, uh, and a parks tour that, uh, took place from approximately 12:30 to 3:00, and, uh, and now here we are. So, uh, earlier this afternoon, the, or right before this meeting, the personnel committee, uh, did meet, which is kind of standard operating procedure for you, and the recommendation, um, from the personnel committee is for the council to consider, uh, two candidates, uh, not both, either candidate, uh, Chris Dalton or Aaron Reinders. Um, now, as far as moving forward this evening, a couple options for you all. So you have that recommendation to consider those two candidates. Um, that could be the focus of your discussion at this point, unless of course, uh, another council member has, uh, contrary opinions to that and wishes to discuss other candidates as well, certainly have that possibility. So I would just put that out there for you. Uh, ultimately, you also don't have to make a decision tonight. Um, however, it seems like you, you definitely have all of the background information, everything you need to move forward if you, uh, if you wish. So, uh, my suggestion for you is to, uh, either A, move forward with a discussion about those two candidates as suggested by the personnel committee, or B, if, if counselors have contrary opinions to that, uh, that should probably be tossed out, uh, for discussion as well, so.
I guess my question is, is does anybody have, anybody else they'd like to throw in there? We just, like Gary said, came up with a recommendation of the two, eliminating three right away, and discuss those two tonight.
My first comment was just to, uh, thank all the candidates that applied. We were very fortunate in having five really good candidates, five really good interviews. Um, I was very impressed with their presentations were outstanding, and all five of them were, and, um, all five could do, could do this job, but it's like, we're, who's the best fit for our future city manager? And, and not being on the personnel committee, I- And not being on the Personnel Committee, I came to that same conclusion, so, of the two individuals.
I came to the same conclusion also with the two that were with Aaron and Chris tonight.
See?
President?
Yeah. I would like to just take a couple of seconds to thank Gary, all the work he's done for us. I don't know that we could have done it on our, on our own. The, how, what'd you start, what'd we start with, fifty?
Thirty.
Thirty.
Thirty? Okay, well, I was a little bit close. But thirty candidates, and it's worked down to the five that showed up here, and we interviewed or were allowed to interview. I think you deserve a lot of thanks for your work.
Thank you.
Okay, saving my voice so I can speak at the end here. I hope you can all understand me. I'm also in agreement with those two, those two choices.
Sounds good. So I guess where we need to go next is we need to discuss and make a decision of, and I think we, we should be able to do it tonight, being eliminated down to two candidates, and both, like I said, candidates are good. But I'm gonna give you my opinion right off the bat. I guess, I'm gonna state my preference to Chris Dalton. I think he's done an excellent job. He's filled in, he's done a great job in the interim. I heard, excuse me, nothing but good comments, and from department heads to people on the street, to anybody that had to work with him, and it's been a pleasure that they enjoyed working with him. And I guess, I'll be honest, I, my support would be for Chris Dalton. I think he's earned it, he deserves it, and that's where I'm at.
I'll let you others go first.
And it is a day we had a disagree, it is a day we didn't agree on the Personnel. We just didn't want to come down here with a recommendation and say this is what we were proposing. We weren't, I'm not saying we're disagreeing.
We wanted to hear everybody else's opinion before we made a firm recommendation, and just, we didn't want to, we want to hear what, because they had two great candidates.
I'm just saying, the way I feel and what I think should be done, so.
I'll certainly take a stab. I like both candidates for a lot of reasons, and I really appreciate the department heads' information that we received today. They also support, based on my overall reading of the comments, the same two candidates. When I look at those recommendations and I, and I look at what we've, where we're at, that Aaron is a wonderful candidate, and we all like her personality and her excitement and, and, but she hasn't had the lead job yet. She had an opportunity in her previous, or in a current position to, to take the lead job and, during an interim period, and chose not to that. And I know she gave us an explanation for that, but I, she had an opportunity to step up and chose not to, and they picked a different department head to lead the agency, and I, based on what she told us, I think, I, she had an opportunity to take the lead and during a stressful time chose not to. And therefore, I, and on the opposite end, Chris has been here for the last six months. We told him, and he, when this was happening, he'd have to fight it out in the interviews to, to get this job, and, and he has. I mean, his presentation was phenomenal, as he, we asked all the candidates to pick one issue to try and talk about and resolve, and he picked about eight issues, if I remember right, and solved them all. So we went way above and beyond what we were asking for. Does he have all the capabilities and the experience to be a city manager? He's missing a few, but I, you know, that's, every new manager's gonna have that, and we're gonna have to provide some training for him, and we would that with any of these candidates. So I'm gonna support the motion that we moved with, with Chris.
I just have a quick question for the council. When do we start looking for Chris's replace, for the assistant manager?
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet.
Okay.
Still recommendations.
Hold the horses. Good question. Hold on.
I should've said if, except.
We could direct them to start tomorrow.
We have to, first of all, we have to make a decision, and then we have to get that agreement written up and stuff like that, which we would probably meet tonight afterwards and kind of get stuff going, but, yeah. And then we cross those bridges and not to come back to the City Council for a suggestion, recommendation again, so.
I also.
Excuse me, Mr. President, one of the things that I don't think is really in front of you, and it's a very significant question, is whether or not there's going to be a contract. Is that?
That's our next step. I was gonna ask you that, about, okay, now do we do a contract, and how much is the salary?
Well, I think part of that is up to the person that the position is offered to.
Right.
If they are applying, either assuming or insisting that they're gonna have a written contract, we need to know that. Otherwise, there may be some advantages to not.
Gary can probably explain that to you.
So it's very, very common for people in this position to have contracts. I mean, it's, it's very rare that I do a search where there isn't a contract in place. I personally recommend having contracts because it's very clear for both parties. What you had in the past was, I mean, I think it was an agreement, because it was an offer letter that went into some detail about, here are the components of it.
But it was never signed by the city.
Well, it was signed by your representative.
That's, we got something tentatively drawn up, but all the lines and dots and everything gotta be filled in, but we need to do that as the personnel after we make a decision.
What is that?
And then bring it to final approval for the city.
So that is a contract there?
A, what I, what I did was forwarded a draft.
Okay.
Kitchen sink agreement for consideration by the city. That would require legal review, that would require.
I haven't seen this before.
No, but we just got it.
All right.
Well, there isn't any intention on my part to circumvent legal review. I mean, it would be appropriate for the legal review to occur now, not in advance of now. But, so, but it, but it's your call if you want to use one. I would say, finish your discussion about candidates and then talk about next steps.
Yeah, that was my thought.
Yeah, whether, whether or not you want to move forward with an agreement or not is entirely.
And how long that agreement would be, and.
So, so, yeah, let, yeah, again, I, the agreements are, the, this position is eternal probation.
Right.
So the agreement typically is open-ended. You can, you can do, well, that's what it is.
I like that.
I mean, it's.
We've seen in the past that it is not necessarily permanent probation, all right? I mean, maybe you're not dealing with that aspect of it, but having this, yes, it spells it out for both parties, but it also binds both parties.
Well, but typically, if people leave without an agreement, parties end up paying anyway.
It's been known to happen.
Yes, it has. So again, I believe there's an advantage to an agreement, but it's not my call, so.
We just make a decision here, then we'll get onto that, the subject, and decide what we want to do.
I'd like to disstate a little bit, you know, between Aaron and Chris, you know, have got great personalities, great presentations, great interviewing, lot of energy. They took a lot of time and effort in their interview to explain their presentation and their vision, even down to the color of the, of the, his charts for, you know, and it was very impressive, you know, on that aspect. And, and I would agree with Les, and, you know, you're, the individual you're gonna hire is not gonna have every, every piece of the pie. I feel he's willing to, to learn it and to take it day by day, and I've heard no negative feedback within the community with the people that he's, the peers that he's working with.
Or from staff.
And from staff. And every time I've asked a question, he's got me the answer. And, you know, Aaron brings a lot more service time as an assistant city manager. I would give that. I would agree with, like Les stated, where she had a, there was a unique situation where she stepped down, didn't want to take that active role of manager role. And we've had Chris now onboard as our interim manager, so I would support Chris as a new city manager.
The other thing I think about too is all these renew projects coming, and so much work coming in, and, and we have decisions that gotta be made, and these projects gotta get moving, and, and not that a new person couldn't help that, but that'd be just all that huge learning curve to get them up to speed on where we need to be, and, but that's not the sole decision, but.
It's not the sole decision, you know. Another thing, I mean, we hired Chris for economic development.
We did.
That was a primary role when we were looking. Now, that, to fill those shoes, that's gonna be very challenging, you know. You know, with Aaron, you know, she's got a lot of planning and development with communities, you know, with past experiences, and those are other things that I feel Chris can learn to help our community, and he's vested within our community, and I feel he's here for the long haul. I felt a little hesitation with Aaron, whether she was on the fence or not.
Encourage her to apply for the other position. Who knows?
Well, that can be discussed.
Dave can't talk, but.
He's not gonna say a word. Go ahead, Lisa.
Mom is the word.
It's, it, you know, to have a candidate like Aaron come in, it's like, you know, she really, you know, was right up there, and I, I think that she would fit in well. She had a lot of good qualities as far as, I think, her future planning and strategic planning and so forth. Probably the biggest thing that holds me back is, is, is she here for the long haul? You know, we've got somebody now that works with staff really well, and I think that, you know, we are looking for that piece, and I think that there's some things that he will need to learn, and, you know, might be a little green at some things, but I think that, you know, you can't, you can't teach personnel, you can't teach culture, and you can't teach that, but you can teach those other skills. You can learn, you know, more of the roles, so. I guess I'm comfortable with that decision, and with Chris.
Squeak out anything over here, Dave?
I'll try. I kind of, I kind of agree with what Counselor Fisher was stating. That's where I was going with it. I just want to comment on one item that our president said a couple meetings ago. Those are my two top choices, and I'll back either one of them, because this council is known for that. Even if it's a three to two, four to one, we'll move forward with it. So I'm, I'm okay with that.
I do think, though, if we, if we go that route, we do need to give better guidance to him as to what our priorities are and what we want him to focus on, because there's a lot of things going on, and.
And we did load him down.
And we have loaded him down.
He went from assistant to the manager, to renew, to everything, and his plate is bubbling, and we need, you guys in the back there, help him out, take some of the load.
Yeah, and he's filled in with PUC.
Well, I know one of the areas that he scored a little lower in was not being involved in the community as much, but he, he's new, he's been here, and we dumped a lot of work on him.
Well.
And so maybe with this position gets settled a little bit more, he will get out.
And he does have a family, too, you know. We've, we've dumped a lot of stuff on him, and I think he puts in a lot of hours, and I think that, you know, they've gotta have that.
Mr. President, seeing him every day, and working with him every day, and seeing the two assistants up on the third, second floor, always working with him, he's constantly talking with, not constantly, but I don't think a day goes by when he isn't communicating with Shawna. So he's keeping on top of things, and I know I don't have a vote, but I strongly support.
Thank you. Yep. All right.
Entertained a motion? I think we're all in agreement.
I'll offer the motion then, to offer the appointment of city manager to Chris Dalton. I know, all right, that's the first motion, then we'll talk to the rest.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. Now, Roger, where should we go?
Salary amount and a contract, right, Roger?
Well, right, and I'm not sure to what extent. I believe they were given a range.
So here's what I suggest. Negotiations by group, a big group, is not advisable, in my opinion. So what I would suggest that you do is designate your Personnel Committee to act on your behalf. I don't, I think this is gonna be pretty straightforward, but, but talking about a salary in a meeting like this, I don't advise. I think the question about an agreement can be discussed between the Personnel Committee and the city attorney to arrive at a suggested course of action regarding, first of all, whether you have an agreement, and then an agreement that meets the city attorney's, if you decide to use one, that meets, you know, his approval as well, and then that would all come back to you for, for action as a full group. So, so my suggestion is to designate your Personnel Committee to act on your behalf. I mean, obviously, they know the parameters of the position, and quite frankly, with an internal candidate, it's, it's even easier to put those pieces together. So that's my suggestion for you.
Is that something we could do tonight with Roger?
I totally agree with that. I don't know if we're gonna be doing that this evening. I think we're gonna need some time.
Yeah.
I would agree.
Yeah, the Personnel Committee probably meet first, and then meet with Chris to, you know, hash out the terms, so. But I think that, and then it'll come back to the council.
I think we could meet tonight.
As a proposal.
Oh, no, you want to do somewhere else.
I got a date with the baby.
You might be hungry. You might be hungry.
Red sticks.
With my horse's voice, I'll motion the Personnel, Personnel Committee move forward with Mr. Gary Weir's recommendation.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
So we're, that part is that authorizing the Personnel Committee to determine the salary and to authorize the contract. Negotiate the terms of the contract.
Of the terms of the employment, which may or may not involve the contract.
Go for final approval to the council.
Yes, and come back to the council.
Next meeting, whether there's an agreement or not.
Yes.
So I second it.
Any more discussion? See a nun? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries. But no more business? Meeting adjourned.
I learned something new here.